Oh, you did. Hold on, let me.
We're getting there. Yeah, I talked to Andrew. He said that, uh... Yeah, I was doing the...
We're good, Michelle.
Now, if we can find a spot, I guess we'll put it first.
It's early. Oh, we're late. The desktop for you.
So it's gonna go out to everybody.
Okay.
Uh... Oh, very small way.
Good morning. Welcome to the October 28th Tulare County Board of Supervisor meeting. Would you please rise with me as we salute the flag of our country and remain standing for a moment of silence? Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Our first item on the agenda today is Board of Supervisor matters. As always, we will start with Supervisor Innes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tomorrow morning, I will be out at Granite Hills High School speaking to Mrs. Kissling's senior class and kinda going over the different things that a supervisor does, the different committees that I serve on, and kinda what my goals are as a supervisor. So, that's all I have.
Supervisor Sheeta.
Sunday, I attended the opening of the Italian exhibit at the Agriculture Farm Worker Museum, and it was very well attended. And if you have a chance, please go by. I think as we progress with the different exhibits we have, I think we have an archive which is gonna prove very valuable for our students and anybody interested in the different cultures that have settled in Tulare County. Tomorrow, I'll be attending a groundwater land use symposium in Clovis in the morning. I don't know if any other board members are going. Are you going to that too, Pete? Um, and we have a Veterans Dinner this Wednesday, tomorrow night, at the Day Memorial Building. And that's all I have.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right. I'll continue with the quick morning that we've got with Board of Supervisors matters going. I, too, will be attending the groundwater symposium in Clovis tomorrow. And then I also wanted to make a plug. I did have a meeting with Patrick Hamlin from Animal Control yesterday, and he handed me a flyer featuring an event that they are going to be doing to help veterans and active military personnel in terms of adopting pets. And I really do think it's a great event. The Animal Control is celebrating during the week of November 8th through 15th and encourage all veterans and current military personnel to attend where they can adopt a free pet from the Tulare County Animal Control Facility. And I think that's a great thing. So, please help spread the word about that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just a few things. Supervisor Sheeta, myself must have been on different schedules. I closed out the Italian event, and you must have opened it up. So, I was there also. A very good exhibit. A lot of people there. This evening is the Visalia Chamber Business After Hours Open House. It'll be at AAA in Farmersville, run by Mr. Fabel, so invite folks to attend that. This Thursday, our CO, Jean Russo, and myself will be speaking to our Supervisors Academy who will be graduating. Looking forward to that. Saturday evening, the Tulare County Young Ranchers and Farmers fundraiser is being held, and I'll attend that. By way of reminder to everyone, so that you don't end up, you know, caught off-guard, this Sunday is the day to turn back your clock. We have daylight savings time. So, if you thought it was getting awful early at 6:00 and 6:30, you're gonna be surprised on Sunday. Last thing, I wanted to display our award. This is the award we received from the CSAC, from the California State Association of Counties, in recognition of the lead program that this board sponsors. And that's all I have. Yes, sir?
Kinda dovetailing in with the Animal Control deal. We did capture a large bear in South Main Street in Porterville yesterday, so he's been captured. They're taking him up to east of California Hot Springs and releasing him. It was a pretty good-sized bear, though.
Wow. They just think he's coming down for the water?
I don't know.
Wow, that's quite a way. I don't think I've heard of a bear all the way to Main Street in Porterville before. Okay. Next up on our agenda, we have a presentation given by the Center of Digital Government and National Association of Counties. Peg.
Chairman, I apologize, but they have not arrived yet. We believe they may be lost, so...
Certain irony there, isn't it?
There's a little irony. Well, we got the award, so... Our county got the award. So, we will bring this back to you when they... You know, we'll bring the award forward to you when they...
We want to do it later in the agenda today, if they find their way?
They find their way. Thank you.
Okay, so we will put item number two off, then.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, not off-agenda, but we will delay item number two. Okay, I do have a request from two people to speak during public comment period time. This is a time for public comment, people wishing to address the board on an issue that is not on today's agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, we would request that you step forward, state your name and address for the record. I do have two requests, and we'll allow others. The first is... Oh, Mr. Bond, are you going to do a...
Better one.
Are you gonna do a public comment?
Yes.
Okay. First up, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chair, Board, CAO, County Council, good morning. Mike Bond, RMA Public Works. And your board has eight items on the agenda today, all related to a bridge program that RMA has. And the person responsible for this bridge program is Ben Ruiz. Ben is Acting Chief Engineer over the Design Section in Public Works and also Development Services. And just to touch on a few aspects of the bridge program, I think it's the envy of most counties in this state. And a couple of bridges of note. Avenue 416 Bridge, just completed. M-13 319 Bridge in near Three Rivers is an award-winning project, and the Road 224 Deer Creek is on schedule for completion next year. And that's in addition to a very robust measure our funding plan that we have ongoing. And this is a great effort with planning. We are doing a number of these community plan updates in conjunction. Public Works is contributing on the... in the area of the Complete Streets Project, so very much directed towards each of the communities that are involved in that. And I would just like to thank Ben for his contribution here, and just to make the board aware that Ben was honored by the American Society of Civil Engineers in California. The San Francisco branch awarded Ben as the Outstanding Civil Engineer in the Public Sector for 2014.
I don't know if I'm supposed to speak here now, but I was obviously very surprised by the award, but I was deeply honored to be recognized by some of my peers, other engineers that I'm sure have done a lot bigger and greater things than I have. So, it was a big honor for me, and I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Hey, we're glad to have you work for us. Thanks, Ben.
Congratulations.
Okay, I do have two requests. First one, El Padillo Garcia from Dinuba. If you please step forward, you can use either one of the microphones. If you would, sir, your name and address for the record.
El Padillo Garcia. And I want to talk about the cemeteries. And the cemetery was open in 19... in Dinuba. It was open in 1910, and the first people that got buried there, it was a nine-years-old girl. Two years later. And then she stayed there for six months, and after that, another guy, twenty-seven-year-old man died, and she got there. And after that, it was going on, you know? And now, I am thinking on having a wall for the people who got cremated, and they don't know... A lot of farmers, they put their ashes on their farms, you know? But after that, they don't have nothing else to do, you know? So, and I was thinking that if we can put a memorial wall and put... so we can put their names on it. And I... And here in the state of California, there is not such a wall for the people like that, you know? And because they want to have the body in the cemetery. And you might go and say, "Well, if we don't have the body in there, I don't wanna put the names on it." But the need is there for something like that. And I wonder if we can do that, have a wall, maybe if it's high and so wide, you know? And put the names on, maybe about one-inch letters on it, or half-inch letters on it?
Chairman, I ask a question. Mr. Garcia, is this... are you talking about the folks that have no headstones, but they are buried there? Or the potters field, where people were buried as potters? Or...
No. I am talking about cremated people.
Oh, I see. The cremated people, okay.
Cremated people.
Well, I was gonna suggest that you contact the cemetery district, 'cause they have their own board, governing board. Have you been to them?
Yes, I have talked to them already.
Okay.
And they said that you guys are the one who is governing them, and they can do nothing without your approval.
Well, why don't you meet with one of our administrative assistants? There's a couple of people here that can meet with you after today and talk to you some more.
Okay.
And maybe we can... maybe we can work out something. I don't know. We have to... Actually, we appoint people to that board, but then they are an independent board. They do their own... they operate the cemetery, not the Board of Supervisors. But one of our... as you leave the podium there, one of our administrative assistants will talk to you about your situation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for coming today.
Melissa's right behind you, and she'll speak with you. Okay, next, I have a request from Bob Barnett.
Morning.
Morning.
My name's Bob Barnett. I live in Farmville, 486 South Farmville Boulevard. What I'm here for is Southeast Asian foreign to my daughter, who I adopted when she was three days old. She was born right here in Zara County. She made some questionable choices in life, and she's being conserved, but she's being conserved in San Jose. I saw her a week ago this morning in Coria by Isaias. She was at Cypress until about two months ago, when all of a sudden, they took her to San Jose. She... And I've been going in circles trying to... I just want her to be closer to friends and family. She doesn't have any friends or family in San Jose area. And I've been trying to find out if this can be done, a comparable program or a comparable hospital. And as, you know, I adopted her, I was 31-years-old, back from three years in Vietnam, but I learned more about what it meant to be a man, raising a little baby. And I just ask if it can be resolved that she brought back to a comparable facility in Zara County. She's from Zara County, has friends and family here. And I'd like... That's all I came here for.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board during public comment period? Yes, sir, please just step forward, and if you would, your name and address for the record.
I am Nick Notarnacola, 2074 West Marinette, Exeter, California. I'm also president of the Enrico Caruso Lodge of Isaias, Sons of Italy. This past Sunday, we had the reception at the museum, and I'd like to thank the board for the foresight they had in building that museum, allowing us to show our ethnic influence into Tulare County, plus allowing all other ethnic... Also, I understand the school, Tulare County School, and Tulare County Historical Society was involved in it, and especially to Amy King. I think she did a superb job of doing the curating there. I know I brought some stuff in, and it looks a million times better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And it did look great. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board during public comment period? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, and we will take up our consent calendar. Before we take up our consent calendar, we do have... we'd like to have Mr. Spot, if he would speak to items 16 through 24.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. CAO, Council, Mike Spot, Resource Management Agency. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly address your board, highlight some key features with regard to the items on your agenda that invoke a larger perspective that RMA, working closely with the CAO and your board, have been trying to accomplish in the past few years. Let's turn to the bridge projects. There are a number of bridge projects on your agenda today, which really manifest themselves in terms of a larger portfolio of projects, which are about 20. The total amount of these bridge projects are $90 million, and the important feature of this is that they are 100% funded without any contribution. In other words, there's no net county cost associated with all of these bridge projects, which total, as I say, about $90 million. The Public Works Branch has worked very hard in trying to keep a very aggressive schedule, and as a result, they have achieved a degree of prominence in the state for a relatively modest-sized county taking on this much work and bringing it to a successful conclusion. In terms of timing, it takes an average of about three to four years to complete these bridges. Some examples are the 416 Bridge, the M-319 Bridge in Three Rivers, and what we have slated for completion in 2015 is the Road 224 Bridge in the Deer Creek area. Consequently, this is an example of how RMA is working to provide an important public safety service to Tulare County. Turning now, if I may, to the water grants and related projects. At the present time, Tulare County has acquired approximately $6.25 million in water-related grants. That constitutes about 13 grants. Most have little or no net county cost associated with the services that are to be provided. Of those 13 grants, three are for bottled water, and 10 are for projects in disadvantaged communities designed to improve the water system so that safe and drinkable water can be provided to those residents. All in all, what these projects represent is a connection to the community plans, to the hamlets, and the smaller areas within Tulare County. There have been a number of public projects, private projects, grants, economic development activities, all designed to promote three things: economic development, assist disadvantaged communities, and to help the middle class. And one thing that we are trying to do in order to help all segments of society, believe it or not, is through the project processing approach, in that economic development is at the table on the front end. And by facilitating these projects, we get to building permit, we get to construction, we get to value, we get to operations, we get to the jobs, and so on and so forth. Another interesting feature, and you're gonna be seeing this when we come to your board in December, with regard to the community plans. It'll be Traver, For One, Porterville, Goshen, Pixley, and so forth. And that's what we are trying to do, is establish as much by right activity through these community plans, so that we eliminate the discretionary review. Consequently, the environmental review has been very robust on the front end to try to examine what the environmental effects were, so that we can get right to the ministerial permits, and thus accelerate economic development, accelerate housing, and then provide assistance to all segments of the community. So, that was a larger perspective, if you will, to try to put these agenda items in specific contexts. There are design contracts with regard to the bridges, and there are bottled water projects with regard to other grants, and then there's also another Caltrans grant for several million dollars... $300 million, if I may say, to try to focus on this State Route 65 quarter. If you recall, what we tried to do in keeping with your vision through the general plan is to focus on corridor development. There are so many land use, economic development, environmental, and other related activities to try to focus. We started with 99, now we're gonna shift to 65, so that we can get these communities up and running, both from an economic as well as a housing perspective. So, I know that was a broad perspective, but I think with all the activity that's been going on at RMA in a strategic sense, we should step back and put it in a little bit of context for you as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Supervisor Worthy, who brought this up yesterday during our agenda review, looking at this. There's about almost $3 million worth of, you know, engineering, design work, water work on here, and he said, "We just can't let $3 million go on the consent calendar without saying something about it." So, thank you very much. So, we do have our consent calendar now, items 5 through 27. Any board member wishing to pull any item?
Mr. Chair, I would like to remove item 11 for separate consideration, please.
Okay, we will have item 11 removed for separate consideration. Any others? Anyone from the public wishing to pull an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, we'll consider the consent calendar with one motion.
With approval of a balance of consent calendar.
I'll second that one.
Moved by Innes, seconded by Vanderpool, and it's unanimous. We've had item number 11 pulled. Sir Vanderpool, are they aware you pulled this?
Yeah, they are aware. If you would like to, Jason, give a brief overview. I don't know if I necessarily cared for the way this item was written, and I just wanna make sure that we're able to have a full understanding of what we are approving here.
Sure. Thank you. Jason Britt, Public Health. This is a small grant that the... through... from the CDC, Center for Disease Controls, through the State Public Health Department, has awarded to a number of counties in California to just do some basic training and webinars, and to try to get some understanding around the phenomena that's occurring in communities. So, just from a broad perspective, Public Health is charged with looking at a very big lens around health and health-related issues, not only at the local, state, federal, and worldwide lens. So, part of our charge is, and part of what this grant helps on, is just to sort of look at some of the phenomena happening around increases in heat-related illnesses, increases in air quality, or decrease in air quality, and some... and causes of disease carried by vector insects. So, again, it's... the grant is small. We're mainly using it to do some training and to basically get some understanding about who's doing what in the community, and so with that, I'll entertain some questions.
Yeah, I just, you know, when I read through this agenda item this weekend, it, you know, the first line, "Changes occurring in the world's climate are affecting California communities," you know, it's just boom, right there in your face. You believe in that philosophy, and I philosophically may question that, but I appreciate the general global perspective of what Public Health is trying to do. And rather than just subscribing to the "climate change is happening and it is human-induced" philosophy, I just wanted to call attention to this, and, you know, I'm aware that every California county is accepting this money, correct, to plan for their vulnerable populations?
A lot of them are.
A lot of them, but there are some that have not.
The State... the State Department decided which counties was gonna get the planning money.
Okay.
And then, of course, there's always gonna be more activities that follow. But they've broken up the state into 10 regions, and so we kinda got the regions money, which is very small. And so, it's really to reimburse some staff time, to do some initial training, and get some framework and understanding around what is it the state is asking us to investigate.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I would certainly encourage you to, if this is part of the planning process, to check with the Air Pushing Control District Governing Board, 'cause they have obviously a tremendous amount of research information that might be helpful, too. Second.
I didn't make the motion.
Moved by Worthy.
Second.
Seconded by Sheeta. Please cast your votes. It's 4-1, Vanderpool voting no. Okay, we will now take up our untimed items. Item number 26, request from Solid Waste Department to approve and authorize personal resolution, creating one accountant, 123 position effective November 2nd, 2014. Tried to drag that out long enough for you to get to the microphone, Bryce.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Bryce Howard, Director of Solid Waste. I'd like to go through just a quick summary of how we're doing to date. This is a small grant that the, through, from the CDC, Center for Disease Controls, through the State Public Health Department, has awarded to a number of counties in California to just do some basic training and webinars and to try to get some understanding around the phenomena that's occurring in communities. So just from a broad perspective, Public Health is charged with looking at a very big lens around health and health-related issues, not only at the local, state, federal, and worldwide lens. So part of our charge is, and part of what this grant helps on, is just to sort of look at some of the phenomena happening around increases in heat-related illnesses, increases in air quality, or decrease in air quality, and some, and causes of disease carried by vector insects. So again, it's, the grant is small. We're mainly using it to do some training and to basically get some understanding about who's doing what in the community. And so with that, I'll entertain some questions.
Yeah, I just, you know, when I read through this agenda item this weekend, it, you know, the first, first line, "Changes occurring in the world's climate are affecting California communities." You know, it's just boom, right there in your face. You believe in that philosophy. And I philosophically may question that, but I appreciate the general global perspective of what Public Health is trying to do. And rather than just subscribing to the climate change is happening and it is human-induced philosophy, I just wanted to call attention to this. And, you know, I'm aware that every California county is accepting this money, correct, to plan for their vulnerable populations?
A lot of them are.
A lot of, there are some that have not.
The State, the State Department decided which counties was going to get the planning money.
Okay.
And then, of course, there's always going to be more activities that follow. But they've broken up the state into ten regions. And so we kind of got the regions money, which is very small. And so it's really to reimburse some staff time to do some, some initial training and get some framework and understanding around what is it the state is asking us to investigate.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I would certainly encourage you to, if this is part of the planning process, to check with the Air Pushing Control District Governing Board because they have obviously a tremendous amount of research information. That might be helpful, too. Second.
I didn't make the motion.
Oh, I move approval.
Moved by Worley.
Second.
Seconded by Ashida. Please cast your votes. It's four-one Vanderpool voting no. Okay, we will now take up our untimed items. Item number twenty-six, request from Solid Waste Department to approve and authorize personal resolution creating one accountant, one-two-three position effective November second, two thousand and fourteen. Tried to drag that out long enough for you to get to the microphone, Bryce.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Bryce Howard, Director of Solid Waste. I'd like to go through just a quick summary of how we're doing to date. So, first quarter, a lot of things have happened, a lot of changes that this board took action on. A lot of positive things have taken place. The sort of main themes we sort of came with the last year on was trying to increase transparency in what we were doing, trying to increase stability in the overall system, trying to increase services or right-side services and provide and reduce some costs. So I'll just, this will only take up. Thanks, Gene. As you can see in the first quarter, our results are good. This is only the commercial side of the business, which is the majority of the changes that we took place. The residential side hasn't changed much year-over-year. The recycling component is self-funded, basically, so it doesn't really add or subtract from the revenue stream or the cash flow. One change we did see, which is a little bit surprising, we had a pretty significant drop in C and D the first two months of the quarter, but that corrected in September. Not quite sure why that happened. Partially, that's why I'm requesting the additional positions, to try and dig into the numbers a little bit more to understand what's happening. One of the things to keep in mind about our service is that it's a competitive in nature. We do have private sector out there that competes with us every day for this volume, or at least tries to. So it keeps our pricing and our services, I guess, current, you might say. So as you can see, in September, we had a forty-nine percent increase, in August, a thirty-five percent in July. Primarily, the July was, year-over-year increase was because of the flow control that was put in place by your board. The August was primarily because of the pending disposal contract. That was the first hit in August. And then the little more bump we got in September was adding Mid Valley came back to us completely from TCR. This slide here shows a actual, how much revenue we're collecting per working day. And there's a little bit of differentiation between year and year, between month and month. And as you can see, that the solid waste business tends to be very, very stable once you get in sort of an ongoing business. You can see in two thousand and thirteen, we're running right around twenty thousand dollars a day, very, very stable. And, but unfortunately for us back then, not enough. And as you can see in two thousand and fourteen, those slow increases up to September at forty-three percent. The September number is important because that's what we're using to project forward for the rest of the year, based on what we're seeing in September, not based on what we're seeing in July or August. That's our first quarter results for Q one. On the commercial side, a half a million dollars extra, thirty-three percent increase year-over-year. Our cash growth, so the first quarter, we're up about four hundred thousand dollars on our bottom-line cash. We forecast to be about one point eight million. We expect that trend to accelerate based on what we saw in September. And our target is two point five million annually. So we're running a little bit behind our target still. The target's there for, primarily for building new cells and building new capital. That's the number we've always been talking about the last year, it's about two and a half million dollars a year. Future cash growth, so City Visalia back in September, directed staff to negotiate a long-term or five-year agreement with us to have that completed in a hundred and twenty days. That negotiation's ongoing. We expect to have that done by the end of this year, bring it to your board in December. Franchised agreements, we're just about ready to conclude those. We're done with all the terms and conditions. We're working out some of the details on just some of the language. Parties have all agreed to, well, at least staff and parties have agreed before we bring it to your board for consideration. We have two sludge contracts we're considering right now from two different vendors. One actually is from the City Visalia, which will reduce their cost dramatically as well. And one is from outside the county for about one point three million per year. That adds up to, we project to get annualized about three point eight million per year annually. With that type of annual revenue, if we can keep that going over the next couple of years, that'll give this board choices that we haven't had in the past. It should give you a choice whether you want to construct expansions at Visalia and Woodville, not just one or the other. You might have a choice to do both. Obviously, if you just do one, it reduces our costs overall that we can give out to services, out to the community, but it increases the cost of the surrounding communities by having less landfills to use. Now down to our request. The Solid Waste Department requests that the Board of Supervisors approve and authorize a personal resolution creating one accountant position effective November second, two thousand and fourteen. The main reason I'm asking for the position is, went away. Put that back up there. It's been apparent over the last year, and especially over the last three months, that the amount of revenue we're bringing in and the amount of work we're trying to undertake is sort of outstripping our system internally, what we have. We do monthly look at our budgets and to see how we're doing every month to make sure we're not getting eroded by the competition somewhere and to make sure we're not missing our projections. That requires a lot of our administrative services analyst time, officer time, which takes away from her ability to really look at the other aspects of our business we're looking for, which is new recycling programs. We're looking at mattress recycling program. We're looking at a solar facility potentially. We're looking at gas utilization out there. It takes away from her ability to sort of work on those aspects to move our department forward. By having an accounting position, which, which I've realized traditionally that this department's always had, whether it's when it was underneath RMA, it'll help us get that transparency internally and externally, which we're going to have to do with our cities as we contract further with them. It's also going to help us reduce some of our costs by looking at specific line items in our budget to understand where our costs are. And I would like to conclude that, that what we're going to try to attempt with our department going forward is we're setting up these five-year agreements, but really, that's just to get started. I think next year, we're going to start looking at twenty-year terms, start really looking into real long-term stability. And with that, the department is changing where we have all these contracts we're now going to have to administer, and that requires more administration time. So with that, if you have any questions or comments?
Any questions for Bryce?
Mr. Chair, question slash comment. First of all, Bryce, it's fantastic to see those kind of numbers for solid waste compared to some of the numbers that we've seen before you were hired and kind of sent this county into a bit of panic. One of the areas that I really hope that we're going to be moving towards is going to be restoring services in some of our more isolated communities, even if that is at a higher cost through transfer stations. I know that there are some areas that are a long distance from a landfill. And, and so the transfer station option, whether it's operated by the county or one of the haulers in the territory, I think is going to be a very valuable service. And I know that there's constituents in early-mart who definitely miss that transfer station and really hope that we're going to be reopening it at some time in any kind of a format. So I just ask that you kind of keep that in the back of your mind and continue to look at that as we go forward.
Thank you. I remiss in saying that we are working on that. And we are working with one particular hauler in that, down in that area, trying to work out an arrangement where he will provide that service.
Fantastic, glad to hear it, thank you.
I want to echo my colleagues' comments. It's a great report. It's wonderful to see the improved financial flow into the county and reversing a very dangerous situation we were in. My question was, I was trying to remember when we raised the fees for the landfill. Was that in two thirteen, twenty thirteen?
Two twelve, August.
So these, I was just, that's helpful because these reflect then when we had raised our rates, these revenues reflect all of that year when the rates had already been raised. And we have now cut our rates, and we are bringing in significantly more revenue.
Right, that, that's one of the things I neglected to say, is that revenue generally comes from two things. Either it comes from more volume or price increases.
Right.
That's where you get the additional revenue. And none of that's come from price increases.
What you have done, what you've led us to do at this county is to become competitive in the marketplace by reducing our costs, the cost to the haulers, to bring their material to us. And we have increased the volume, and we have more than made up, we, what we found was that when you raise rates, you scare people away to go to other venues. When you lower rates, then they come to you. And, and the Walmart model works pretty well at Walmart, and it works pretty well here in Tulare County. Thank you.
Supervisor Worley, I think, you know, this board has heard that probably three hundred times out of your mouth alone. And, and we've echoed those comments that, you know, there has to be a better way of doing business. And so we, I appreciate all that you've done, Bryce. I appreciate the improved numbers. And, you know, I think what this board was saying for years, we're glad to see it finally stuck. So, thank you.
One thing I'd like to mention, Mr. Chairman, is there's been a lot of change. And the staff out in the field and the staff internally has embraced that change. And there has been a drop in service, there has been a drop in compliance or safety. They just embrace the additional volume, the additional services, the additional stress, if you want to call it, of going through that change. And they've done a great job. They've, they've allowed me to do my job, which has been, which has been good.
My only other comment would be, before Supervisor Ennis, is to watch, there's no subsidizing going on. That was a problem that we've had when we talk about the smaller outlying areas. You know, having one area backfill to cover the cost of another area, I am not in support of that at all. I do not want to see any subsidizing going on. I really don't want to see any red numbers at the bottom, bottom of any area that we're operating. You know, it can be zero, but, you know, red, we don't need to be subsidizing other, in any areas at all, in my opinion.
Supervisor. My only comment was that I believe that carving out Waste Management Deal away from RMA and making its own agency has helped it immensely. And of course, under your direction, Bryce, you've done a great job in running this more like a business. So, thank you so much for all your efforts.
Let's bring us back to the board for action, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Worley, seconded by Ennis, and the vote is unanimous. We'll now take up our second untimed item, item number twenty-nine, a presentation by the district's attorney's office, including the last seventeen and three-quarters months progress report.
While I'm hitting this presentation up, I'll say it's not the first time I've had to follow a waste. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau and counsel, it's my pleasure to be here this morning to provide to you somewhat of an overview, an analysis of, if you will, the state of the union, what is your office of the district attorney. And I'm proud this morning that many members of the office, men and women who are the deputy district attorneys and investigators and some of our senior staff are also here this morning. As your district attorney, I'm proud to lead this office. And I'm here to tell you that as we set, stand today, I made the promise to you that our deputy district attorneys and our staff will answer ready for the people every day in court. And we do that. In fact, we're doing that this morning. I'm proud also to say that with your support, we now field the most senior and experienced staff that we've ever had since I've been in this office. The operational tempo of the office of district attorney is as robust and as busy as ever. Though we may not look like the office of old, through a structural analysis, we've changed our organizational, we've changed our management to some degree. We've also, in a way, a fundamental way, redirected and somewhat changed our philosophy. We're now geared to answer to the victims and for the victims, and we're really a victim-centric organization. So I have never said that what the district attorney's office does is simply prosecute homicide cases, violent crimes, sexual assault cases, because the reality is that's our core function. That's what we do when we wake up in the morning. That's the fire that we feel every day. Our mission is to do everything better. And we've taken an approach to look at, outside of just the core function, to really serve those vulnerable victims out there. And Worley, looking just beyond what is that traditional core function of what we do. I want to talk about trends and what's going on. And it may be somewhat surprising, but the reality is, in the state of California, and it's confirmed by the Attorney General's Office, to some degree, crime is down. And that's good news for our county. I, throughout the slide and the presentation this morning, I've used two thousand and ten as a benchmark. We're coming up on really a five-year reunion on that. These are calendar year statistics that we use unless otherwise told there. The, the slide shows a couple of things. When you look at where we were in two thousand and ten to last year, our felony caseload increased by thirty-four percent. That's pretty phenomenal. We're on par in two thousand and fourteen to be close, but probably a little below that. When we look at the cases between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, what's interesting is the amount of reports that law enforcement throughout the county are submitting to us to make filing decisions on, reviewing decisions on, is down about six percent. But our filing of cases is only down about two percent. So what does that tell us? That tells us that the senior staff that you've given us, that we put in the courtroom, we're making more effective, more efficient decisions, and we're prosecuting the felony cases more aggressively. Misdemeanor trends somewhat mirrors that. Numerically speaking, we do have more misdemeanor cases in our county than felony cases. And you can see from two thousand and ten, there's been a somewhat constant trend of declining caseloads there. The filings have gone down, our total caseload's gone down about eight percent. That mirrors the intake of cases coming into that. I often get asked the question, why would, what's the misdemeanor caseload decrease attributed before? And, and there's probably several, several answers to that. I think we see the biggest decrease really here in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen could be from a lot of the municipal agencies around in our county who, because of various constraints, put an effort on responding to violent crimes, to felony crimes. Could be an indication of that. And I will also say that in two thousand and fourteen, indication of a decreasing case, filed cases is a program that we put into place, our Community Accountability Program. We are taking some misdemeanor cases, certainly victimless misdemeanor cases, suspended license, those types of cases. And we're diverting those prior to ever filing, offering a pre-trial diversion program to help ease the burden, not only in the courts, but in reality, the burden on our jail facilities for misdemeanors that we can probably handle more effectively outside. So that's kind of an overall trend of what we see as often spoken of, a benchmark of how you evaluate the performance of the various district attorney's office. So to some degree, we mirror that state of California. But I'm here to tell you that there's more to quantifying what the men and women in the office do just, other than just the cases that we file. One of the things that we're very proud of is last year, we closed over thirteen thousand cases. And our conviction rate in two thousand and thirteen has maintained at about ninety-four percent. It's probably the first time that a district attorney's ever stood in front of you and said, we did not convict eight hundred cases. That's the reality, though. Thirteen thousand cases we convicted last year, and there are some cases that we did not. We evaluate every one of those. By far, the majority of those are not, not guilty verdicts. Those are cases that we are unable to proceed because of the inability to locate witnesses or put forward the, the evidence in the criminal case. But we're proud of that conviction rate. We do everything we can to have an ethical and a responsible office accountable to the victims, and we're proud of that rate. But again, let me say that there is more to quantifying what we do than just a conviction rate. We, from a historical perspective, want to talk about one of the trends that we've seen, and that is workflow. So the next couple of slides, I'm going to talk about workflow. In two thousand and ten, we had a municipal courthouse in Tulare handle our misdemeanor cases. And a snapshot in two thousand and ten, that Tulare courthouse handled nearly fifty percent of the overall caseload. Visalia and Porterville, obviously the rest, this is just adult cases, by the way. This does not include juvenile cases. What's interesting on this slide, other than the volume in Tulare, Porterville exceeded Visalia. Snap forward, two thousand and twelve, the Tulare courthouse closed. Snapshot in time in two thousand and thirteen, all of that Visalia, all of that Tulare workflow, if you will, consolidated inside the Visalia courthouse. That's when we also had space constraints. We still have those as we spoke a few weeks ago. The Porterville courthouse now opens, and we have twenty-seven percent of the workload there. It's been an ongoing mission to have more and more work going in. It's been an ongoing mission to have more and more work going into Porterville. So, in cooperation with the law enforcement, Superior Courts, in 2014, you'll see that number in Porterville jumps up slightly, thirty-three percent. The reality, and that's where we stand today. There's going to be an ongoing trend in the future to continue to identify cases that can be handled inside the Porterville courthouse. There's obviously a lot of considerations for that. One would be judicial officers to hear those cases, but the space is certainly there in that Cadillac facility. One of the challenges that I think this trend of sending cases to Porterville is going to present to us is our desire to have vertical prosecution of cases. That is almost a one-to-one working relationship between investigators, our victim advocates, our prosecutor, and the victim and their families. And I guess in a simplified way, that attorney, that prosecution team, if you will, can't be in two places at one time. So from a workflow standpoint, I thought it was unique to bring up that compared to 2010, the workload in Visalia is still quite, it's quite large compared to where we were. That's why I'm very pleased that with your support, it looks like we're going to have some viable space options for us to become more efficient. I want to turn now to another area. I've said it, and I will continue to say it, and I will continue to give the board credit in every way for that. We have, as I have said, the most senior staff in our office than we've ever had before. I want to give you a snapshot in time in 2010. We have, our attorneys, our deputy district attorneys are level one through five. This is a snapshot of July of 2010, of the levels of attorneys that we had in the office. You'll see our entry-level positions noted in the black there, level one, were about fourteen, and that was about equal to our most senior level, level five. And then the rest were those in the middle. I chose 2010, wanted to be consistent with our timeframe, but also I didn't want, we couldn't go back too far, and we couldn't, if you go into closer years, you get the merit freeze had some, I think, some impact on that. So I chose 2010 as a unique area, and the snapshot really is where we stand today. And actually, we've got two more attorneys as we stand here today. Our level-one attorneys, surprisingly enough, have remained consistent. We have about the same number of level-one attorneys. Our level-two attorneys have grown. Our level-four attorneys have not grown, but if you look, our level-three attorneys from 2010 have now moved into that level-four. And what is unique, I'm proud to say that based on the office that we have, our level-five attorneys, our senior attorneys, make up a large portion of the office. There are a number of reasons for that, external and internal, but what it tells me, and what I hope it tells you, is that if we recruit successfully, then we can retain our staff, and we can keep those prosecutors here, and we can better serve our communities. In 2013, we did not lose any level-five attorney. In 2014, we've lost one. He was recruited by the Security and Exchange Commission to be an attorney in San Francisco, and good for him. I'm proud to say that we've trained somebody to do that job. This is really having a positive impact on not only me and the managers and leaders in the office, but really the victims and law enforcement out there that work with those victims. We can better do our job. So on behalf of the men and women that are here, I want to thank you for making the commitment to recognize that that is important for us. And thanks to item thirteen on today's agenda, we will now call those level-five attorneys senior deputy district attorneys. Changing now to a little workflow issue, early case disposition. These are cases that were heard out at the pre-trial facility north of town. 2010, when we ramped that up, we really had a vision of settling at an early stage felony cases that were filed, and there were multiple reasons and multiple benefits of that. One primarily from the Sheriff's Department was transporting those inmates was a lot easier because the court is right at the custodial facility instead of having to travel to and from courthouse. It was a, and has been, a very successful program. But you'll see in 2010, eighty percent of the cases that we heard, these are the cases on calendar, were what I will say, fresh felonies. About twenty percent of those were misdemeanor cases. We weren't hearing at that time, other cases. Jumping forward to where we are, 2013, those other cases have consumed, to a large degree, the caseload of our pre-trial facility. In fact, our felony, our fresh felonies have reduced to just under thirty percent. Now, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm telling you that this is a direct response to our realignment. Because of AB 109 and the realignment phase that we've had, we've had to hear these violations of probations, the probation revocation hearings. Those cases are being heard out in pre-trial. They would have to be heard somewhere, okay? They would have to be heard either at pre-trial or here in Visalia. So it is a positive that we're able to hear those things out there. It is dependent, as you know, on the funding, to a large degree, that we get through our community corrections partnership. But one of the things that we're seeing from a workflow standpoint, from 2010 to 2013, the felony cases denoted in red here that are heard out there, and you see the trend in 2013, we're hearing less of those cases. The blue denotes how many of those felony cases are being transferred to Visalia for further proceedings. In other words, they're unable to resolve. Now, at first glance, it appears that those cases being sent to Visalia are lower, which is true. When you do the math here, they're actually resolving at the less frequent rate. And I don't know the reason for that. That's something that our staff is going to look at. We compiled this, and I wanted to see what it was. We came across this stat, and we're going to continue to evaluate that. But we're seeing those preliminary hearings, those cases come to Visalia and Porterville, because Porterville cases could potentially be heard out there as well, at a more frequent. Quite often when I'm out, I get asked about certain crime types, and one of the crime types that I'm asked about is auto theft. Good news in the world of auto theft, stolen vehicles. Now, this is a statistic that's denoted from law enforcement, and it is in fiscal years here. From five years ago, the frequency of vehicles being stolen in our county is down about twenty-six percent. Cases that we prosecute, I want to bring to your attention filed cases and convictions. So in 2013, we filed a hundred and eighty-two cases. We prosecuted a hundred and twenty-one of those. In 2014, consistent with the trend of the crime type going down, if you will, we filed a hundred and twenty-five, but we prosecuted a hundred and sixty-one. How can that be? How can we prosecute more cases than we're filing? Cases don't resolve in the year they come in. Sometimes it takes a while for those cases to resolve. So as, from an operational standpoint, as crime goes down, one thing that we're realizing is, the workflow of our attorneys, our investigators, and our support staff doesn't necessarily go down. It continues. We're continuing to do the good work every day. Another area that I'm asked, often asked about is marijuana suppression. I know the board is committed to helping us fight that battle in partnership with law enforcement. A trend that we see from 2012, 2013, and in 2014, really, it's pretty constant. You down thirty, forty cases. These are felony cases only, by the way, from all law enforcement. We're on par for 2014 to be pretty close to where we are in 2013. But you'll see again, our convictions of felony marijuana cases are surpassing those that we file. Our attorneys, as they will tell you, they don't just sit in their office filing cases, they're in court every day, bringing justice for our communities for that. This also begins a second trend that we will see. Those convictions, the effort that you gave to us, those convictions result in numerous felony sentences that are being housed here locally. The majority of those convictions are going to be housed here locally, either through a felony probation sentence or through a prison sentence under eleven-seventy point, eleven-seventy-H. So our population in our jail is going to be impacted by this population, this group as well. So I'm often asked, where, where does marijuana fall into comparison? So look, in 2013, we filed four hundred and thirty-one felony marijuana cases. We filed a hundred and seventy armed robbery cases, a hundred and seventy-two gang cases, a hundred and ninety-two felony possession cases, three hundred and eighty-five assault with a deadly weapon cases. So from a workflow standpoint, we are prosecuting more felony violators of marijuana than many of those other crime types. So that is something that has kept us busy and is going to, in our partnership with law enforcement. It's a priority for us, and we're happy to do it. Homicides. 2013, we had thirty-two defendants that we filed on. Those are defendants, not just cases. 2014, we filed as a total of ten, thirty. The tragic news in this is, it would appear that we're going to be on par to exceed 2013 in the number of defendants that we file for homicide cases in our county. We look at convictions, cases that are resolving, that's another benchmark of what we do. 2013 closed out twenty-one of those cases. 2014, we already closed out sixteen, I believe. We are having a jury to hear another one of those. I'm often asked about death penalty cases. Currently, we have five death penalty cases pending in our criminal, in our court system. We have fourteen cases that are eligible, but have been, are prior to the designation, determination if we're going to seek the death penalty or not on those. We have about fifty-four cases total. On par roughly about five percent of the total homicide caseload are actual death penalty cases. When you look at the eligible, of the ones that are eligible, how many are designated there? It's about fifteen to eighteen percent, about. One of the trends that we see in our county, and we've seen it for a while, is the real estate fraud. As you know, we have a, an active real estate fraud program. The foreclosure rate in the state of California is designated there. The sad news is, the Larry County rate more exceeds that. So, real estate fraud is an area that we have been and will continue to be heavily involved in protecting our community. Sad reality is, we must reach our victims, either right when the crime is occurred, early on, or before. Because the tragedy in these cases is that quite often, fraud is reported until the homeowner, victim is so far into the crisis that their home cannot be salvaged from them. So we've done more and more in our community education from this standpoint, and we're really focusing at this point on those that are preying upon our underserved and our Spanish-speaking community. These are businesses that come from LA to prey upon our citizens here. Really, two growing trends. One is modification fraud, and the other is rental fraud scams. Financial crime is an area that continues to be a real growing area, county, and a growing area for our office, because the more we look, the more we find. These are a few of the areas that keep us busy. I put this photo in here on the right. You know that we're often engaged in community education opportunities. We had a look at the fair this year, and we did fraud prevention to a large, large degree. We also had photos of welfare fraud, those individuals that had warrants out for their arrest. This is a true story. The individual in the right photograph there, apparently a friend of hers was at the fair, saw her photograph, contacted her, and said, "You are on the Tulare County District Attorney's Most Wanted list." The next day, she turned herself in to our criminal investigators. So what we do in the field of our community education i- is important, and we're going to continue to do so. It's been a priority of mine since I took office, and we'll continue to do so. We've already surpassed in 2014, the community events that we've done in 2013. Other area of focus that you have, that I have, that our sheriff has, and law enforcement, rural crime. We're on par to file as many cases in rural crime as we did last year. Restitution orders are growing. Another area that's important to us is our owner replied number program. When I took office, whoops, I met with Sheriff Whitman at the time, and we talked about how the District Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Department can work collaboratively together. We've pretty much taken over the owner replied number stamping program. In 2014, we issued a hundred and six new numbers. Now, that's not pieces of equipment, that's numbers for victims. So Tim Ward will have a number assigned to him, and all of the equipment will be stamped at number. 2013, we stamped over two thousand pieces of equipment. That's a vital tool for law enforcement, and we're going to continue to put our resources into that area. Human trafficking is another one of the areas that we are going to take the lead on. We have recently trained over eighty members of law enforcement and our staff on this area. We're going to take the point in partnership with our law enforcement officers to identify and help serve this area. I was down in Porterville not too long ago, speaking to a group there about it. The reality is, those cases are out there. We need to be aware of what we're looking for. We've got to train law enforcement, our staff, our victim advocates, on how to interact with those cases. They're there, and we're going to do everything we can to serve that community. When we talk about future plans of the office, again, our function will remain the same. We're going to prosecute homicide cases, gang cases, and everything. Our focus has been, my focus has been, let's protect our most vulnerable victims. We created our Crimes Against Children team. It's the first time ever in this county, and really no one in the state's doing it the way we are, to better serve the child victims, our elderly, our underserved, members of our community. We're going to fight the underground economy at every step in doing so. We're going to provide a level playing field for the businesses in our county that are trying to do the right thing, and make sure that they're not having to compete against those unscrupulous businesses. We're going to strengthen our efforts in our gang suppression, working with our law enforcement partners. We hope to have another gang injunction for our communities coming up this year. And we're going to reach in our community education, well over ten thousand people a year in different areas. The next slide does not mean to say that the Office of the District Attorney has three main facilities around our county. Well, we do. I'm here to tell you that there's more to the Tulare County District Attorney's Office than just teams, divisions, if you will, that are assigned to those facilities. But every day, we have men and women that are answering, ready for the people, for you, and for our community. But really, when you think of the Office of the District Attorney, what stands out, what should stand out, is our unique structure in the way that we're organized to help protect our most vulnerable victims. We've integrated our investigators and our victim advocates on each of these teams in a customer service basis. We now have, for the first time ever, a prosecutor, she does nothing but child homicide cases, infant homicides. We have roughly eight, maybe nine of those pending right now. We also, in our homicide cases, about third of our homicide cases are domestic violence-related. For the first time ever, with your support, we have a attorney, that's all he does is homicide cases that are domestic violence-related. We have, that's on our special crimes division you see there. Our gang violence division, we've got six prosecutors handling those cases just here in Visalia alone. We also have a prosecutor in each of our outlying offices, Porterville and Juvenile, to handle those cases. We've got more attorneys handling those crime-specific areas than before. This is really your Office of the District Attorney. Every day, we're going to court and prosecuting cases, but we're doing it in a way that serves those those victims on a more personal level, a more professional level, and we're doing it from a vertical level because what could be more, I guess impactful than a child having to come to court? And every day, you come to court as a meeting prosecutor, a new investigator, a new victim advocate. And that goes for, as a parent, many newer parents as well. Can you imagine if your child was going through the process, or you called the office, and every time you called, you're getting a new prosecutor on your case? So, this is the future, what the future holds for us, and we're pleased that you have been steadfast partners with us. There is a reason that we have a torch in our logo. We're going to carry the torch of victims. Our mission statement is that we are going to eliminate justice, we're going to enlighten with the truth, and we're going to guide those victims through the process out of this stuff. It's been a robust year for us, not only two thousand and fourteen, but for me personally, since December of two thousand and twelve, taking office. I thank you for the opportunity, and I thank the staff, the men and women of the office who are here today for doing the good work every day. I envy them. They get to go to court and dispense justice every day. So, again, thank you for your continued partnership and support. I'll have to end.
Any questions? Yes, supervisor Wurley.
Tim, I was curious, how many real estate fraud cases did we actually prosecute this last year? Do you know?
I think we have about fifteen to eighteen current cases pending right now.
Good. Good. Thank you.
Other questions?
District Chair, I was just going to tell you, Tim, that was a great presentation, and it was so thorough, I don't even have any questions. I don't know if thorough and lengthy are synonymous, but it was a great presentation, and give an attorney a microphone, and he'll talk, right? But I really appreciate it, and you guys are doing a great, a great job, and very innovative. I think it's really nice to see the fresh perspective and the ultimate focus on advocating for victims. I think that's really fantastic. Great job.
We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I wanted to add, Tim, that embezzlement, the pursuit of embezzlers is extremely important to Tulare County. These many, many of the businesses and even public agencies are affected by embezzlement, and I have not seen an aggressive effort in the past to prosecute these people.
Well, we're doing that. We have the most senior staff in that group, and I will quote a member of our staff who was in the audience this morning, who will take credit for this. She often says that lightning is to homicide as rain is to fraud. Lightning strikes violently, and it strikes precisely, and it has a direct impact. Rain affects us all, and sometimes it comes slowly, and we don't often see it. Next thing you know, we're all wet. But you're absolutely right. It affects not only those individuals in the businesses, but it affects the business community as well. That's part of our overall, I guess, global fight. We're going to do everything we can to level the playing field for those businesses that are legitimately trying to compete but having to do so against those unscrupulous businesses out there. And, and the worst thing is to have those frauds. Those frauds occur on those small businesses because what we've seen in the past, going back several years, by the time the crime is discovered, that business is really in jeopardy. And so, that's, again, why we're doing everything we can from a community education standpoint out there and on the floor. That is a priority of ours. When you talk about one of the growing areas of our office, embezzlement, fraud, workers' compensation, all of those areas tie in together, so.
Thank you. Okay, I understand. Item two is going to be off agenda today. We will bring that back at a later time. I do have a script to read for our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll, my understanding that...
And who are you?
I, I'll come up.
There are people out there in the internet world who can't see your face, Barb. Barb, did you have something to say, or you're just coming up?
Mr. Chairman, before we start the script, it's my understanding that counsel for the applicant is going to request a continue, a postponement.
Okay, and is staff in agreement to postpone this?
I don't know. They're going to make the request.
Okay. Before I read my script, if you would, please introduce yourself, name and address, and who you represent.
Thank you. Peter Zerbib, Z-E-R-B-I-B, appearing for Ms. Mary Lou Lopez, who is presently assisted by a Spanish interpreter. Mr. Victor Perez actually represents Ms. Lopez. Perez has asked me to come and appear in front of the board and the chairman. Mr. Perez is currently in Hanford County. He has other business there, and is asking, since he was just retained last week, to have the matter reset for November twenty-fifth. He does have an investigator out, and he's doing his research soon.
We're dark that day. While you're looking...
Crystal Sullivan with County Council's office. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, counsel.
Your thoughts? I, I know you're ready to proceed.
I'm ready to proceed, but I defer to the board.
Michelle, can we, can you come up with some dates for them that we would be able to do this in the very near future? I don't know that your microphone is on.
Okay. December second, December ninth is a night meeting in Porterville at seven, and then we have December sixteenth.
Mr. Chairman, we have this on closed session. May we...
Okay. You had a question?
No.
That's what I was going to ask. Okay, so, our next available meetings are December second and December sixteenth. We do have this set for closed session. We are going to adjourn briefly to closed session before we take this up. We'll be right back.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just advise that I am out of the state on December second.
So, you're not available on December second?
No.
Okay.
Counsel, December sixteenth, open on your calendar.
I have been unable to get through to Mr. Perez's staff, but if that's the date that is available, then...
Okay. We are going, I'm going to direct you then to work with our counsel and Michelle Bennett, our clerk. If December sixteenth does not work, they will work with you to pick the next available date in January.
Yes.
And we want the applicant to acknowledge that we have told her that this business is to remain closed and not operate until this hearing.
Sorry, thank you.
Maybe two, since we were going to schedule for the sixteenth, if, if they know in advance that that's not going to be a workable date, they should notify us immediately because we have the cost of bringing a court reporter and an interpreter here. We don't want to schedule for a date on the sixteenth and then have, find out, you know, that's too, that, that date's not available.
So, by the end of business tomorrow is what you have to either verify that the sixteenth of December will work, or to work with our clerk to pick another date. So, you have till the end of the business day tomorrow.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes. It's in a regular court, they like put handcuffs on you if you answer a phone, don't they?
Okay. We'll go ahead with the sixteenth.
Okay, so, we are going to set this matter for December sixteenth, nine thirty. We'd like to also have the public know that the public hearing was left open as of our last meeting, and the public hearing is now open. If anyone came to speak to this matter who is not a witness, who has not been contacted by either of the counsel, if a private citizen would like to comment at this time, I'm going to invite them to come forward because the public hearing is still open. Anyone wishing to address this board from the public in this matter? Sir, you may use either microphone. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sir, my name is Raymond Nicholson. I reside in Stratmore, and I've become friends with these people through various operations, and I have visited their establishment several times. I have never witnessed anything that would lead to what has been put upon them, you know? Bringing their building up the code, they have done that. They have worked feverishly to get it done. I have never, ever witnessed any of the girls being touched in any way, anything happening out in the parking lot. They have people walk in the parking lot just to stop that. The girls go outside to smoke or whatever, they're always accompanied by somebody from the bar to make sure that nothing happens to them, make sure that nothing appropriate or anybody appropriately approaches them. I don't see why these people are being harassed. Not only myself, but a few other people that I know, we've all just gone down there, just, you know, to talk, just get away from problems at home or whatever, just, you know, pass the time, time of the evening. Nobody has ever witnessed any of it. Myself, if I witnessed any of it, I would stop it myself. I'm that kind of a person. I do not like to see anybody harassed. I do not like to see anybody bullied, whether it be male or female. I have never witnessed anybody being hurt. I have never witnessed anybody being harassed. I've never witnessed anybody being shot like the claims have been done. They claim these things, but they can't prove them. Nobody wants to come forward and prove anything. So, how can you blame somebody for something that they can't prove? A lot of people have their own issues on it. They feel that, you know, I don't like this, so therefore, I'm going to, you know, vote on it or whatever. If you have power, you can do that, and it's not right. These people are trying to make an honest living, so they don't have the supply on the system to support them. There's too much of that going around nowadays. Young people, old people, whatever, they can work, don't work, they rely on the system to support them. These people are trying to support themselves. They're not asking for a handout, they're just asking for a chance. Whether it be the district attorney, whether it be the sheriff's department, whether it be a preacher church or whatever, no man, no person has the right to say, "I don't like this, so therefore, you can't do it." That is my own personal opinion. Give these people a chance. If you want to put restrictions on it, put some kind of restriction, like they have to hire security guards or whatever. But don't just sit there and shut them down because you don't like the kind of business that they have. You don't like what they do, you don't like how they look, you don't like how they act. Yeah? People are people. These people are trying to make a living, whether they do not spudge out the state, the county, or anything. They're just trying to rely on themselves.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to address this board that's come today? Sir, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Atondo and I reside in Tulare. The reason I'm here today is I do graphic design for the Lopez family and they've always been very adamant with me that the, the advertisements be of, presentable to the public. Not only that, I've been specifically told to make sure that when flyers are placed out, that they're placed in locations of adult, of adult material. Never are they placed in public. So I would, I just wanted to share that as to, as to, you know, their intentions, that their awareness of, of the nature of the business and also that it has its place in, you know, in certain places and not. Another thing I wanted to discuss is the fact that I read an article in the paper and it referred to the business as a Mexican bar. And I'd like to ask anyone here, if it was a, a black patronized bar, would they refer to it as a black bar or a white bar or a Dutch bar or, you guys get the picture, right? And this is in the newspaper. So there, to me personally, there's racial undertones there. There, there, there is issues going on because I don't know what a Mexican bar is. I could tell you what a his, you know, possibly like what a Hispanic patronized bar may describe it to you, but to, but to label something like that, I don't think, I don't think that that's, that's right and I don't think that that's proper. And as far as the, the morality or the ethical nature of the business, it's nobody's, it's nobody's right to impose what is ethical and immoral on anybody else because what is ethical and immoral to me may not, may not be ethical and immoral to you. And that's clearly going on here with the intentions of, of, of different agencies here in, in the county. And it's obviously going on, which I do feel is unjust and I guess we will have to continue to work this out. And I do know the Lopez family and their intentions are to meet every requirement that the Board of Supervisors requires of them. And I've worked for lots of people in my life, lots of people, and I know some, I know some employee, employers that will do everything they can to not follow the rules. And we have a family here that wants to follow the rules. They just need for you guys to set them. And another thing too, the fact that the, the issue of the translator and the court reporter, that, you know, the cost of that, what about the cost of them losing out on revenue? What about the cost of me losing out on revenue? Because they're one of my clients that I make graphics for and I lost out on that additional money per month due to, due to this issue. And so it definitely does directly affect me financially as well as emotionally with the different issues. And I do understand that this is a business and I do understand that this is a, a political format or agenda here. So I mean, with that said, please take into consideration that we're, we are all human and none of us, I nor yourselves, have the right to impose what is moral and unethical on anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I would hope people know that we do not write the newspaper. Anyone else, having come to today's meeting, wish to speak before the board? Okay, I would remind you that the public hearing remains open. So anybody wishing to make public comment, the meeting when we'll take a motion to continue this to the 16th of December as a timed item, but you may also submit written comments to this board. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion to continue this to December 16th.
Would you continue to the 16th?
Move by Worley, second by Ashida. Please cast your votes and it's unanimous. This, this item is continued to December 16th at 9:30 a.m. in this chambers. That concludes our open session. We do continue to have items on our closed session. Madam Counsel?
Yes, we have items E through E. There is an announcement expected.
Okay, we'll adjourn to closed session.
This is Deanne Peterson, Chief Deputy County Counsel, reporting out on closed session, item C, agendized for October 28th, 2014. The Board of Supervisors, on a vote of Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, on a unanimous vote, voted to defend the litigation, the case of Filimi et al. versus County of Tulare, Tulare County Superior Court Case Number 257003. The adverse parties are Teyon Ali Filimi and Robert McDaniel. This conclude, oh, the case involves a breach of contract and a violation of rights.